Please. We have the agenda for review sections first. He is the second reading. And number one, in order to amend supplemental revised and orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title III Revenue and Finance, Chapter 336, Special Improvement District, Section 336.025, regards amending the special improvement district description. Number two, in order to amend supplemental revised and orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title V Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 580, Rent Control, Section 580.220A, regards violations or complaints. Number three, in order to amend supplemental revised and orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title X Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1016, Stopping, Standing, or Parking, Section 101620, Schedule 24, No Parking Anytime, Adding George's Road. Number four, in order to amend supplemental revised and orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title III Revenue and Finance, Chapter 328, he schedules Section 328.090, regards amending fees for land use procedures. We have ordinances on first reading. Number one, in order to amend supplemental revised and orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title V Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 548, Gains of Chance, Adding Section 548.015, City Clerk Authorization Regarding Bingo and Apple Licenses. Two, in order to amend supplemental revised and orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title II Administration and Personnel, Chapter 208, City Council Regards to the Redevelopment Project. Number three, in order to amend supplemental revised and orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title VIII Health and Safety, Chapter 848, Tree Replacement Requirements in Regards to Tree Preservation Trust Funds. We have resolutions, one, approved general amendments, two, approved payroll 11-9-19 to 11-22-19, three, authorized refund for redeemed tax sales certificates, four, approved 2020 city council meeting schedule, five, approved request for street closing requested by Old Family Parish, beginning at 40 Jersey Avenue to Handy Street to Troop Ave. Ending at Sacred Heart Church, right hand, Torta, Guanajuca, Mexico, Uwea, New York, 2019. Procession of the torch passed from Mexico City to New York in honor of Lady Guanajuca, Monday, December 2nd, 2019, time four, 7:00 PM, Police Extra Duty Non Pro Tum. Six, approved request for use of city requested by Tomella Pittman, location parking spots on the left side of Seaman Street between Repton Avenue and Troop Ave. For toy drive and toy retreat collection for children in the community, Sunday, December 22nd, 2019, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, Police Extra Duty. Number seven, approved amendment of resolution R. 101953, additional amount of $4,090.90 in cost of shuttle service. Total cost is $135,850.90. The city of New Brunswick and County of Middlesex through 2019 operation of two shuttle buses not to exceed $4,090.90. Number eight, approved resolution for the New Brunswick Police Department's continued participation in U.S. Department of Defense 1033 program for receipt of surplus equipment. Number nine, approved authorization to advertise for 2018 water main replacement project, Page 1, specification number 813-20W. Ten, approved authorization to advertise for 2020 dam rehabilitation project, specification number 814-20W. Eleven, approved amendment of resolution R. 061986, reason additional professional services related to disclosure agent for 2019, authorized professional service agreement with PNC Advertisers LLC for 2019 continuing disclosure agent services as required by the Securities and Exchange Commission not to exceed $2,550. Number twelve, authorized purchase by the Fire Department in Jersey Star Contract T. 0790/17-FLEET-00811, fire fighter protective clothing equipment from Firefighter One Limited Liability Company doing business as F1 Professional Safety Services for helmets not to exceed $1,275.78. Thirteen, approved amendment of resolution R. 031792, reason pay overage charges of $600, authorized lease of coffee machines to the tax assessors office with three fellow USA Incorporated not to exceed $600. Approval as the amendment will not constitute an increase in 2020 more of the amount of the original contract. Fourteen, approved amendment of resolution R. 101913, the reason additional $55,000 to pay outstanding invoices for specialized legal services with Hogan Longo Maranda Suduca LLC for 2019 special counsel and tax appeals division of assessment from $205,000 to $260,000. Fifteen, approved resolution to refer amendments to the planning board for review and report in regards to parking infrastructure and rebuilding on undersized lots. Number sixteen, approved resolution to authorize refund of escrow to the Vax Corporation Group Rabbit, L.C. Day, refund of police extra duty amounts $4,592.75. Seventeen, approved resolution to authorize refund of escrow for North Star Contracting Group for refund of police extra duty amount $6,098. Eighteen, approved resolution to authorize refund of escrow of top line construction for refund of police extra duty amount $15,409. Nineteen, resolution authorizing budget transfers 2019 municipal budget. Twenty, approved award contract for Morton Salt Incorporated for trees, rock salt for public works and water utility departments, 12-month period commencing December 5th, 2019, amending November 30th, 2020, not to exceed $76,000 on six county blockers purchasing program CK 12.06 from Morton Salt Incorporated. Twenty-one, approved amendment of resolution R. 051924, reason extend the contract for two additional months for the period October 18, 2019, December 17, 2019 with the Life of Promise Incorporated for food preparation services for the New Brunswick senior citizen service center not to exceed $10,247.60 non pro tum. Twenty-two, release of site performance fund in the amount of $628,347 to 986 Jersey Avenue LLC and Care of Quick Companies LLC for 986 Jersey Avenue Block 598, Lot 6. Twenty-three, release of site performance fund in the amount of $230,250.90 and balance of site inspection fees of $6,105 to Construction Management Associates Incorporated for 191 Happenin Street, Block 57, Lot 54, Lot 56, Lot 58. Twenty-four, approved site performance guarantee and site inspection for reduction to 409 Joyce Kilmer LLC to 409 Joyce Kilmer Avenue Blocks 286.01, Lot 1.01. Twenty-five, approved amendment of resolution R. 111856, extend the contract for one additional year commencing July 1st, 2019 and ending June 30th, 2020, Puerto Rican Action Board Incorporated, Fair Housing Counseling Services not to exceed $15,000 non pro tum. Twenty-six, authorized tax collector and transfer credits on several tax utility accounts. Twenty-seven, authorized refund of PNC Bank on Block 318, Lot 32, 16 Allen Street against $2,019 taxes in the total amount of $1,488.40. Twenty-eight, advising consent to rent control appointments. Name Dirk Braxton, tenant representative expired December 31st, 2020. Samuel Besson, student representative expired December 31st, 2019. I have some discussion and other comments to follow up on. All right, here we go. What's all?
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Estivar.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming is absent. Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig, Council President Anderson.
Here. Please be advised that the notes requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been applied with and satisfied and that the annual notice of all public meetings in municipal councils of the city of New Brunswick can be filed with the city clerk to be placed on the appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall in New Brunswick, New Jersey that has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune. Please stand, very ready, likely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Give me the remains, if you can, for our monasans, for our men and women in our armed forces, both here and abroad, especially those in combat, especially those who've given their lives, lost limbs, and have come back hurt. Thank you. I think we mostly accept the minutes from November 6th. Here.
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Estivar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Uh, report of correspondence by the city clerk.
Yes. Item one, a biennial certification inspection report from React Environmental Professional Services Group in regarding 285 to 291 George Street. Item two, a copy of the ordinances introduced by the East Brunswick Township Council on November 18th, 2019. Item three, a letter from the NJDOT regarding the fiscal year 2020 municipal aid program for the Joyce Kilmer Avenue project. Item four, a notice of public hearing by the Borough Highland Park Planning Board on the Master Plan and Development Regulations Reexamination Report. Item five, a notice of public hearing by the Borough of Milltown Planning Board on the 2019 Master Plan Reexamination and Update Report. Item six, a letter from the Middlesex County Mosquito Extermination Commission regarding various water management projects within the county of Middlesex. Item seven, a Home News Tribune affidavit from Gannett, New Jersey regarding the net paid circulation for the Home News Tribune. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. Uh, we have no public hearings, we have ordinances on second reading. Number one, in order to amend supplemental revised and orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title III Revenue and Finance, Chapter 3.36, Special Improvement District, Section 3.36.025, regards amending the special improvement district description. Any member from the public who's to comment on that, please step up to the microphone. Do we name the graphs for the record? We have about five minutes, one time.
Good evening. I'm Mr. Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I'd just like to understand what the current policy is, how this differs from it. It says something about residential being exempted if it's less than five units. What's the current?
Uh, all residential is currently exempt. Uh, we have an internal opinion that, under the current language, not this amended language, that, uh, large commercial rental establishments uh, in the SID would be under our current ordinance. Uh, they've been fighting us on it, so we're explicitly changing the language such that any residential building with five or more units in the SID would now have to contribute to the SID going forward.
Thank you. Uh, just get clarification, who are we fighting, uh, the city on this? Or the, or the SID, I'm looking.
You'd have to reach out to Phil DeShaneau, he's the one as tax assessor who's been dealing with it. Unfortunately, he's not here, uh, so you can reach out to him for comments.
Gotcha, thank you. So, I guess some of the properties that, that would be impacted are, uh, like Spring Street, the, uh, I think the View also, is that correct?
If they fall under this umbrella, yes. Uh, ultimately, the, uh, as the budget for city center is adopted through here, this isn't necessarily going to inflate their budget. The idea is to make sure that all the parties in the SID are paying fair and equitable share, and this will actually alleviate the burden on the existing entities that are paying into it, uh, while ensuring that everyone who's benefiting from the SID is contributing.
Okay, so this would bring more, uh, more to the, more people to the table, more payers.
Correct, not necessarily more revenue, but more payers.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, move the ordinance.
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Estivar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes, number two, in order to amend supplemental revised and orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title V Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 58, Rent Control, Section 58, 220A regards violation and complaints. Any member from the public?
Evening once again, Charles Cradaville. Uh, could I just ask, you know, what is the, uh, change and what is the reason for it?
Um, currently, uh, any and all rent controlled fines are issued via summons with mandatory court appearance. Uh, this has bogged down the courts and resulted in significant inefficiencies across the board. Uh, what this would do is for the first time in a three-year period, uh, the first failure to register and only for that type of violation uh, would be a mailing ticket of $250, plus they would have to, uh, still register and pay their late fees and whatnot. It would just result in that one time every three years not having to go to court, saving, uh, lots of time and efficiency for both the rent control, uh, division and the courts.
So it's no change in the amount of the fine?
Uh, the amount of the fine, if you go to court for a summons, can range anywhere between $100 to a maximum of $2,000, depending on all sorts of factors, uh, repeat offense, the, the court, the judge, uh, the prosecutor. So this would set a flat fee of $250 for that mailing fine.
Gotcha.
Which of course, the, uh, person could come and still fight in court if case so choose. Thank you for the thorough answer.
Anyone else? Move the ordinance?
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Estivar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number three, in order to amend supplemental revised and orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title X Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1016, Stopping, Standing, or Parking, Section 101620, Schedule 24, No Parking Anytime, Adding George's Road. Any member from the public who's to comment on that? Seeing none. Move the ordinance?
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Estivar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number four, in order to amend supplemental revised and orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title III Revenue and Finance, Chapter 3.28, he schedules Section 3.28.090 regards amending fees for land use procedures. Any member from the public who's to comment on that? Seeing none. Move the ordinance?
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Estivar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have ordinances on first reading. Number one, in order to amend supplemental revised and orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title V Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 548, Gains of Chance, Adding Section 548.015, City Clerk Authorization in Regards to Bingo and Apple Licenses.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, December 18th, 6:30 PM, same date to be advertised.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes, I'm sure.
Councilmember Estivar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number two, in order to amend supplemental revised and orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title II Administration and Personnel, Chapter 208, City Council Regards to Redevelopment Project.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, December 18th, 6:30 PM, same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Estivar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number three, in order to amend supplemental revised and orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title VIII Health and Safety, Chapter 848, Tree Replacement Requirements in Regards to Tree Preservation Trust Fund.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, December 18th, 6:30 PM, same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Estivar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes, we have resolutions one through 228. Any member from the public who's to talk about the resolutions that are here to 228.
Evening once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Page three, the top, uh, what was the cause of the increase in the cost?
Should I be talking about?
Yeah, the number seven. Uh, the amount that we had put in, uh, was the same amount as last year, but there were increases in costs, but our prorated share with the county remains the same.
Okay, and I know last year, you know, we talked a lot about the bus system and how it could be improved, uh, but I just want to be clear, this is the status quo continuing, just the same, same thing. Is there any plans in the near future or the distant future to upgrade or do more to provide bus service in the city?
Uh, better for the public, I think we're just talking about shuttles for now, because we don't want to get into that.
It's not shelters, though, it's shut, the shuttle buses.
No, sorry.
Okay, so yeah, so this is for, I guess, the M1 and the M5, right?
Those are shuttles used around cities.
So I think that, you know, those, as I've outlined before, can be really expanded upon, should be. Uh, next is the 1033 program, this is the, uh, ability of the police to get equipment from the military. Um, have they gotten any recently, I think this year? Uh, do they have plans to get any, or is this just to, you know, keep the option open?
Uh, we just the option, Captain.
Just to keep the option open, we didn't make application for any equipment in 2019.
Any plans for 2020 application?
Not in my career, I don't know what the future holds.
Okay. Uh, can you ask the water director, please, about 9:10, the, uh, two, uh, the one's a water main replacement, where is that? And the 2020 dam rehab?
The, uh, water main project is, uh, Route 27 between Van Dyke and Quentin Avenue. Going to, uh, upsize an eight-inch main that has lots of breaks to 12-inch, and then we're also going to run a 12-inch main down Quentin Avenue to Jersey Avenue to improve flows over to the water tanks. Uh, the dam, uh, upgrade project, a series of, of repairs that, that were identified following inspection. Nothing really big.
And this is the, uh, Weston's Mill?
All four dams.
All four dams, okay. 914 Hogan Longo, this is another increase for the tax appeals. What is, uh, leading to this, um, you know, higher than expected?
Are these the new assessments that people would have, you know, the revaluation?
Yeah, but that was, that was, what, 2017? So, I mean, people already had their opportunity to appeal it. That's, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be affecting this year. Maybe Mr. Egan couldn't like this, because I know he's in the tax board.
Well, I'll accuse myself of a few months of matters, but I think the president is correct. It's, uh, revamp to 2018, I believe, and, uh, we're still, uh, I believe there's a lot of cases that are on appeal from, from, from residents and homeowners. And, uh, Mr. DeShane now is doing his best to get it right, so I think that's the fact.
Okay, just for my own clarity, could you ask the administrator what, what year the, the revamp was? Just so I know, I'm not wrong.
I believe it was 2018.
18, really?
Was it? I'm not pretty sure, I haven't even looked into it.
Okay, I'll, I'll double check, I just thought it was 17.
No, I think that's too far, it was too bad. I think it was 2018.
Well, all right, well, I think, I think we're losing the crowd, so. 915, uh, what is this? Uh, parking infrastructure and rebuilding on undersized lots?
Okay, um, so this is sort of a, uh, wide group of amendments here to the rezoning ordinance, uh, sort of catching it in one referral here. Uh, but we are looking to amend parking infrastructure. Uh, with a bit of forward thinking here, we'd be setting some minimum requirements for mid to large-scale projects for electric vehicles, uh, like cars, electric cars, and, uh, for bicycle parking requirements, as well as, uh, clarifying, uh, a section of the zoning ordinance, uh, regarding, uh, developed undersized lots and the need to rebuild on them, as the current language has caused not significant, but enough confusion this year that it merits changing the language for clarity.
Thank you. Um, the bottom, page four, 924, uh, this project dates back really far, right? So this is the site performance guarantee and site inspection fee. How long does this project take to complete, and is it still going to get a tax abatement even though it took so many years?
Well, the specific of the tax provision, I don't have any information. Specific to the, uh, ongoing project, I believe the owner is asking to go into two phases. They did some, uh, site work improvements, parking lot improvements that'll service the existing building, and then there's a proposed second building, which is, uh, not a large building, it's, um, I think it's maybe a story and a half, and it's, uh, primarily kind of the storage warehouse, um, facility, with perhaps a small satellite office in there. Uh, but other than that, this is, uh, this specific resolution is, they requested a reduction in, in the guarantee, uh, because a bunch of the workers haven't been completed.
Okay, so there'll be a whole second phase still in the future?
That's our understanding at this point, correct?
Okay, um, do you have questions on two more, 925? Uh, why is this happening so late? This is a contract for July 1st.
We, uh, only about a month ago, uh, we're able to fully access our CDVG amounts. Uh, there's environmentals that have to be done, uh, for exemptions, and, uh, our action plan notes only submitted and approved in August, so this is just sort of a reality of anything through the CDVG process.
Thank you, and then the last one, 928, two members on the rent control board, can you tell me who are they replacing?
Yeah, I'm replacing a former student, representative and an additional tenant.
So there was a vacancy? Okay. I know both are good people, come to it.
Anybody else in the public on the resolution? Seeing none. Move the resolutions?
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Estivar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. The last discussion by the council, council needs to say a thing.
Just a reminder that the tree lading is Friday night, 5:00 PM, the city starts. There's a cook off, a dog cajun, and leaving trees actually at 7:00 PM. So if you can join us for that, it'd be great.
All right, we have, uh, public comment. Any member from the public who's to comment on anything, please come up to the microphone, give your name and address, just for the record, whether it's here or elsewhere. About five minutes, one time, please.
Good evening once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Um, first want to ask about the Code Blue program. We had some snow, we've had some cold nights, uh, what is the, uh, I didn't see it called to me for, to do the Code Blue, is that going to happen?
Let's see how we're doing that, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, when it hits our threshold, we'll call it.
And the threshold is?
20 degrees and six inches of snow.
Okay, and, uh, fresh my memory, I'm, I'm not, uh, not going crazy here, the, uh, I thought it had been changed from 20 degrees, right? Why, why is it going back?
Yes.
And why?
Uh, it went back, it was only 25 degrees because we had enough resources to make it happen. Uh, this year, we realized that, uh, with the city of New Brunswick being one of very few municipalities across the county, and with the, uh, the increased amount of homeless individuals that are, um, being asked to come to the city of New Brunswick, the number is just not doable.
Okay, well, uh, is, there's also a location change this year, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it's going to be primary location, U.D. Square.
Right.
In my neighborhood. Great, so, am I, uh, able to volunteer to help out with the program?
Not sure, anybody who's been involved?
Absolutely not. Uh, we had this conversation last year, as a, as a member of the press, he's not allowed to. We had this conversation, Charlie knows he answered to that. How he can help as a, a member of the press is to, uh, we've had this discussion several times, is to bring awareness to the situation that is happening in the city of New Brunswick and throughout the county with the issues around homelessness and the work that the city of New Brunswick is doing as one of the leaders on social services across the county, uh, regarding homelessness. That has not happened yet.
And so am I the only person, uh, in the city of New Brunswick who's been, uh, turned away, who wants to, to help volunteer in the program? I, I mean, we've, we've done articles on it, we've promoted the fact that it's an open thing, and people can sign up for, and I signed up, and I think it's a little, little, uh, shady and revealing that, that, you know, I wouldn't be allowed to help, especially, I, I live, you know, very close to this location. I'd be happy to, to come and, and help, uh, you know, take, take the load off of others who have been doing this for, for a while, and I also, I, I, I don't see why, if it's going to be in the second floor, the vacant, unutilized second floor of 81 Repton Avenue, why it can't be every night? Why only nights when it's extreme, extreme cold? I mean, freezing point is 32, to say only if it's 20, or only if there's six inches of snow is like, only going to be the, the, the very worst nights, and I, I think that, you know, we can do better, and people power is one way to do that, volunteers are a way to do that, and I'd be willing to help, and I, I think it's wrong and, uh, kind of, kind of silly that, that I wouldn't be allowed. Did any of the council members agree with me on that?
I think he's doing a fine job, so I'll let, leave Mr. Jones.
Okay, any update on Robert Wood Johnson and their violation of the French Prospect redevelopment plan? plan?
Not yet. I hope to have some more information at the planning board next week.
Okay, thank you. You know, I tried to ask about during the resolutions, transit, anything coming soon? I know we did get another bus shelter, which is nice, but how about actually getting more routes, more coverage, better buses?
Always being looked at.
Who's doing the looking into it, though?
Everybody in England.
Okay, well, that's not a, a very, that doesn't inspire confidence that the work's actually going to get done, because, you know, we, we all said a lot of things during the campaign about what we wanted to see happen, and I don't think that, you know, everybody's following through on what they, what they told the people. And I do want to just, just finally ask about that tax abatement for 409 Joyce Kilmer. If they're not even going to complete the project, are they getting the tax abatement already? Is there somebody here who could comment on that? I don't see Mr. Penix.
I don't know. I could shoot out the telephone.
Okay, I guess, and then one final question, I've been trying to find out. Clary Escobar, a barber employee of the mayor's office, is she going to continue to work in the mayor's office?
I haven't heard that she's not, or she is, whatever, so you have to talk to the mayor or Clary herself.
Okay, yeah, well, that's the thing, I've tried to talk to Clary, have had success. You know, there's a representative, two members in the mayor's office here tonight, could any of them tell me, is Clary going to continue working in City Hall while she's free from her?
No, they've come from the mayor or Clary herself.
Okay, well, I've put in a request to the mayor's office, it's early September, Mr. Barr is vouch for this, and I, I know he's a good man, I just haven't been able to get the answers, and so I don't know what else to do, but to come here and point out that the mayor's office is not being responsive, I think that you guys are really kind of freezing me out and not being fair players here, and, you know, the people of New Brunswick deserve better, that's all.
Okay. Anyone else in the public wish to comment on anything?
Good evening. My name is Paul McFlain, I live at 225 Hale Street, excuse me, and you may recall I was here two weeks ago to present the fact that I have recurrent flooding in my basement that comes into my house with any significant rain. I have a fully functional French drain system, but I'm getting all this water that is coming in because of the small diameter or the leakiness of the drainage pipe running across my property along the east side of my house between Hale and Baldwin Streets. With any significant rain, the storm drains flooded, my sidewalk is flooded, Hale Street is flooded, sometimes all the way across. The flooding in my basement always starts on the side of the house where the storm sewer pipe is located. As been, has been noted before by myself and others, the inadequacy of this storm sewer line is seen in the fact, there's also recurrent flooding in the basement of First Baptist Church across the street from me on Livingston Avenue, and into the basement of my neighbor's house at 221 Hale Street, that's owned by Ms. Maris Morales. I've been told the runoff from Red Shaw School on Comstock, Delavan, I'm not sure which it is, comes into this sewer line, and this is causing this backup. I heard secondhand that the sewer line on my property was looked at five years ago or so, but no effort was made to increase the capacity of the pipe, but this is only secondhand information, I've only lived in the house for the last 18 months or so. Since my last appearance here, there have been two rainstorms, one on Sunday, Sunday November 24th, and one two to three days ago. Neither was, I'd say, especially severe, less than an inch of total rain. On both occasions, I ended up with about two to three inches of water throughout my basement, despite the fact my sump pump has been running constantly and pumping water to the perimeter of my property. Even when it works properly, there's just simply too much water to cope with adequately. This is clearly an unsatisfactory situation. I happen to have taken photographs, I'd love to leave these with you if you guys would like to look at these, a set of photographs taken at the first, the rain that took place November 24th, and then these ones, time, date and timestamp from the most recent rain, so you can see the rhythm of the accumulation of water in the street. It went down when the rain stopped, but then the rain started up again, boom, it's, it's back. So I don't know if you'd like to have these, and I do have a, one large-sized photograph that shows the rain. If you care to see the rain accumulating across three quarters of the width of the street.
What are those?
Pardon, so yes, so you may have that, and then these two sets. As I said, that's from the end of, that's from November 24th, I think, and these are timestamp of mine. So, I would also like to just point out, just for further information, that a comparable sewer drain at a lower elevation on Hale Street, close to Ramson, was flowing freely. The water's just, you know, coursing through it on Monday, but while the one in front of my house was nearly full of water in the state. I'm going to jump, jump ahead a little bit here. During a severe storm in the summer, this last summer, the flooding was high enough to flood the bottom of my water heater, so I had to replace it. That cost me about $1,500. I'm fearful of this happening again. I believe that if it does happen again, it's due to the negligence of the city, not my efforts, that, that I would have to incur this cost. And honestly, I would come seeking some damages from the city for that. I say that measuredly in the context of the fact that I've recently been required to repair sidewalk in front of my house at my expense, which is almost done at this moment because the city asked me to do it. The, I've been given a notification that my property taxes are going to go up $1,300 in 2020, so I feel like I'm willing to pay that. I'm sure I am better off than the average New Brunswick resident. I'm willing to make this city better and contribute to its upkeep, but frankly, I'm frustrated when if the city requires me to do things and then doesn't undertake the work that I think the city has to do. The city has indicated that it intends to flush the line under my property regularly, but if that's so, I haven't seen it to be the case, and I'd like to see a concrete schedule when such work is actually undertaken. I'm not an engineer, but my judgment is that a larger diameter pipe should be laid, or companion pipe, some pipe to be laid to carry away with the water faster, or most satisfactorily, a new pipe should be laid under Hale Street, draining to Livingston Avenue or some other place so the water is properly carried away and does not accumulate in front of my house. So then the final thing I want to say is, I'm, I'm bringing this to your attention, I don't know if you are the people to whom I should bring this, does this matter? Whom should I speak to? With whom should I work to see that this problem is fixed as soon as possible?
Any other word, Barbara, Mr. Leslie, any answer?
Specific to the gentleman's issues and claims, his occurrence has been reported as recently, that's a little bit new, we are aware of some issues with the church across the street from him, excuse me, which clearly we've jetted along in daytime, I don't know if you're during the daytime there or not, I can't give you a concrete schedule because our jetter primarily is the first responses for any sewer backups. That takes priority unfortunately, because that's a life safety issue more, not so much, not that I'm discounting your, your concerns, but if we have sewage industry, that's a significantly more like a safety issue. We have undertaken discussions with McDonald's specific to this issue, we will have folks onsite shortly to take a look, and then we'll probably do some di test and trace the lines in which way the water's flowing. We suspect that when Red Shaw, Red Shaw was done, they, they connected to the storm, which they probably should not have, but we have, we take a little bit of investigation, do this in order to actually act, actively determine which is the right course of action to do. So unfortunately, these things don't happen that quickly.
I'm sure they don't happen that quickly, but I will tell you, I am going to keep coming to these meetings and keep harassing people until I see that some concrete action is being taken, and that's just as a matter of protecting my own property, but also the city should work well, and that's, this is a serious problem, if you guys came out and you saw that the new concrete sidewalk that you had just paid for was under three inches of water, and the water's coming up to the first step of, of the house, and it extends all the way across the street, and one of your workers comes with a long pole, and just kind of pokes around a little bit in the hole to see if you can release some of the dunk in it, this does not feel like, this feels like an emergency situation to me. So I don't want this to drag on endlessly with like talk about how, yeah, it could have been this, and I don't want to get too odd on the caller, but I, but, because I, but I really would appreciate some action on this from whomever is able and willing to take action.
Mr. Leslie, you can direct the public works department.
Very good, so I will be in touch with you as well. And for, the city engineer, is that also somebody I should speak with, or?
Same person.
Same, you're the same, you're the same person, okay.
Oh, actually, I'm the city engineer, the director of the public works, but we have a license, and you're just on staff now.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any timeline, because I know that that is a valid challenge that is happening there with the church, also really bad, for, for, for a long time.
Yeah, but specifically the church or where that, the, the complaints from 225, even across the street are relatively recent.
Yeah, so do, do we know when, I don't know exactly, what is causing the, the challenge with the flooding in that area? Because the church, like I said, happy going to those challenges with wire, really bad.
Right.
So do we know what it is, and we have somebody, you know, who kind of, what is causing that flooding in that particular part of the...
The, the storm sewer system, the storm sewer system on those several blocks is, contrary to what typically what you see in town, typically you see a storm main along Livingston Avenue. For some reason, and this is historic and legacy, on several blocks, primarily from Comstock, I think through Sedam, there are some lines that actually are partially mid-block and cross, you know, through properties between the side streets. That's uniquely unusual configuration of the storm system in town, so, but I don't have, I can't at this moment give you an exact timeline, but we will, I will definitely have some of our DP folks out there tomorrow, by the way, the weather issues with storm, I mean, with sanitary issues.
Anyone else in the public? Seeing that?
Motion, Jerry.
Second. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.